How's it going?
You all are little people who tears out here. That is nothing like this coffee. You all are like...
I'm gonna show them.
You fuckin' motherfuckers, and you suck at this, bro. Because you've been slacking this to try to push the crowd back. They're not even ample seats in this audience the way it should be. And who else is standing up on any of this puppy talk that these folks up here doing? The stuff that the police department is doing? You all should be... Y'all gonna go straight to hell. That ain't a tough word. You all gonna be going to the cops. Every goddamn state, God is gonna be killing them on this. This don't even make no sense. Y'all sitting here and play on the... Play on the emotions of a few people trying to get a few dollars from y'all. Them people ain't there looking for money, and y'all holding them hostage. Children need to be shamed trying to hold the scent of the staff here in the Flint of... in Flint City Hall hostage. Talk about they gonna do some cuts, and they gonna lay folks off to try to put through the good pressure on y'all. Y'all supposed to stand fast, because in any household, you never make fifty thousand dollars and have a budget of seventy-five thousand dollars. That's ridiculous. He want you to walk past a budget that you ain't even got money. Thank you. Thank you. All right.
Mr. Speaker, is Valerie Malon? Valerie? Okay. I am Valerie Malon, I am President of the City of Flint. As I said before, I need you all to go mind, mind, mind on this budget. If you do not understand anything that's in this budget, vote it down. I want you to please, uh, Resubution 250160-T, split every single part of that out. I'm also impressed that as far as the mayor's one point six million dollars that he wants for his, um, for his, for his office, cut at least a million two out. Sixty-four million, I'm not sure if he did not do a... He did not present you all with a balance budget. And we really, we really need you to stand up for us. He acts like he's a magician. Basically, he's got people over here, he's all upset over here, but something is really going on over here. So I need you to... And when you're looking in the budget, look for words like might, may, however, so that anything happens, so if you can do one little thing, we don't get stuck with another twenty-nine point five million dollars. Please let us go ahead and try to get a loan. And the loan is supposed to be paid by fact, by grants that we made or may not get. We do not want to go back under a... A mortgage manager. So that's what I'm saying. So don't let... I know Liddell has her PhD in sociology, basically that means...
And arrogance. She double majored. And then you got Candace over there. Trying to claim the monopod as a fucking tripod.
Next speaker is Stanley Wood.
Remind him of... My hero will call me when I leave.
All right. All right. I told you guys on Monday, I've been a long time viewer watching. Monday was my first time coming here. And all I can say is it was a shitshow.
Sir, you're being called for a thing, please use other words.
Freedom of speech, dumbass.
It was clear on Monday, the mayor instructed you guys not to remove people if you guys had a problem, uh, filled with unbalanced... But everybody said, you got sixty-four million, sixty-eight million, your four million is short. That's simple math. I'm not sure if any of you guys can get that kind of stuff, but, um... Judy, our councilwoman in fourth ward. I left before the Bay Lake Hotel. You went to City Attorney, went out back. Is that a coincidence? No! I put some words for Mr. Major that said, "Look at the tape." So I spent two days looking at the tape. I spent two days around to see how we're gonna charge people when it's the two police officers that I owe for a fact, they did a punch for show some money.
Yes.
So, uh, Liddell, our councilwoman in the second ward, this safety plan to use speed law. Where do we get a copy of that so we can see what we're supposed to do and not supposed to do? Number one. Number two, was it even voted on by the council? Or just something that some people made up and not even a thought?
In other words, it wasn't voted on.
Uh, and then today I walked in for the news conference that the two, uh, council people had, and the first thing I noticed is, there's probably forty or fifty chairs missing.
Yes!
It's all the way across, which is fine. It's giving us a bigger mosh pit, I guess. I don't know. But we're trying to distance residents more and more and more. My next question is, when are you gonna start requiring us to show our ID and order speed? Is that gonna happen? We're hurrying to get through the door. And the last thing I got to say is, if we can't stand on aisle, or by five aisles, why are the police allowed to stand?
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, how much time do I have left?
Five minutes. Five.
All right, I'm still standing here until it's cold.
You actually cannot stand there silently, so thank you.
Here you stand, Candace.
Next speaker is Larry Harvey.
Some puppy talk, that's what I'm saying.
What I witnessed on Monday was absolutely despicable. While residents voiced their frustrations, I sat here and watched council members laughing and giggling at residents who were speaking about serious issues and brawling their parents. I watched the same council members refuse to make eye contact and listen to the youth of our community. I watched Liddell and Leo constantly sticking their hands under the table to gossip and nuke them like middle school girls. And even today in this meeting, Liddell and Leo were trying to each other. And when you had a chance to respond, you sat silent instead of taking time to address the concerns of the people. You are terrible role models for the youth. I watched you play a huge part in the chaos and then get a press conference, then get on a press conference and play video. The youth are... I'm tired of watching you behave like children. There is no reason that we are half your age and have... There is no reason that we are half your age and have more common sense than you. The common sense that... The common sense that tells you, "You force people that don't agree with you is childish and disrespectful." And the fact that once again, the police are working hard against the people, taking up criticism for actual crimes that occur in our community is ridiculous. And I'm not yelling to jump on the TikTok wave. The future of the kids is here on the line. So please ditch your shit, alright? Fire!
Next speaker is Tyler Washington.
Yeah, sit down, sir.
Yeah.
I'm here again speaking on my summer job. I'm a volunteer for certain foundations. My daughter, she was at a summer job through Faith Foundation last year, and it really gave her a sense of responsibility. It helped me out a lot. A lot of things that I didn't have to do, um, inspiring school supplies, though especially Jordans that these kids like, you know, um, this year, she completed team class, and it was my job to deliver for her. So I just, I'm just...
Sorry, guys.
Our children need summer jobs to help their parents, you know?
Thank you. Next speaker is Ms. Secretary. The next speaker is Saleem Alabine.
Yeah, you have some high losses there.
Right? What's up, Josh?
I want to invite my woman, Saleem Alabine. I'm going to make a statement about, uh, the situation now, about how the interest of my work and my... My...
No, the news stations are here now.
...Bunch Street. And I want to...
To join in the shitshow.
If you can stand, you can contact this person.
There goes the chairman walking away while somebody's speaking. Rude ass bitch.
Damn, I mean, this is hell, you know what I mean? But then I contacted the people, and when I really found out what the situation was, you had to add to me from here, boy, because you could even get some... So when he was doing that, he... This year...
Kind of love a bubble butt just walks in the back while he's speaking.
So I'm still reading my book, reading some other work that I need to... And so I can see about it from my foot. And I have another question since I'm a real councilwoman. I'd like to understand about the budget. Since the budget is a serious thing, I was... I heard that Mr. Jared Dennis could give an explanation of the whole time of, uh, vote for the budget as a... Or not, so I can get an understanding. Because I'm here telling you about politics. And so, okay, two minutes or so, could you speak about that a little? Thank you very much.
Next speaker is Janifa Alabine.
Good evening, my name is Janita Alabine. I, um, I have a question. Tanya, Dennis, um, Jared, Mr. Todd, and Johnny, can y'all just... How do they keep changing these dogs on roofs? Like I said, how do they go from two warnings to one warning? How do these roofs go? You have the permission to just change them anytime they get ready. Can anyone answer that clearly, so we all can understand? You know? You know, and the other day when I was with... What's the problem? People had the freedom of speech, but now Candace seems to be back at her same old damn tricks. So... Guess what? It's not working this time. It's not working this time. People is tired, they sick and tired. And you don't ever have to look up. You know what I'm saying? It's very rude. Very rude. And remember what else? Fuck you!
Allison Montgomery, Little John.
Good evening, Council. My name is Allison Montgomery Little John, and as you have been witnessing and experiencing, revolution is here. The chickens have finally come home to roost. This uprising of Flint is the result of the blatant disrespect that has been consistently shown to the residents of Flint by corrupt government officials. This uprising is the result of the following. Former Governor Snyder's agenda of genocide in Flint. The former emergency manager's participation of genocide in Flint. The EPA's participation of genocide in Flint. The corrupt... The corruption and mishandling of the ARPA funds by Mayor Lee Lee and some city council members. The decision to plant willow trees instead of helping residents repair their homes, help residents overcome expensive water rates, foreclosures, and rental assistance. The president and vice president of city council's decision to rape the people's public speaking rights. The president and vice president of city council's decision to weaponize the police against the people. And Chief Reese LeGlet of producing a comprehensive safety plan for the city of Flint. This is the result of the uprising in Flint. To some of you city council members, don't cry wolf now, you are not a victim. This uprising of Flint is the consequence of your mildness, abuse, and neglect. Your day of reckoning is here. Enjoy.
Next speaker is Beverly Bigsley.
My name is Beverly Bigsley. I am one of the third wards of Congress. The dead cause, thank you for coming. I appreciate you, but you know what? You know what you're doing is wrong, like the show. Like y'all pulled my husband out of that car. All you asked for was license and registration. License and registration. We towing the car, that was what was asked. The police was wrong, the chief need to resign, and your man need to step out too. And you're like, "Don't be scared, Candace, Adele." Don't be scared now. Don't be scared now. Hold your head up. Come to the BAs outnumbered. They outnumbered. You see the channels are down, but then you take all these chairs out of here, you wanted to sit up like voters. You wanted to sit down here like voters. But that's what you want. You have... Being across there, that ain't gonna stop it. We're tired. We're tired of the BS, and it's time for you guys to wake up. Judy, you ain't left out. Don't look at us here because you're not left out. And like I said, Leon's grandmother passed. I pray for that family. I have no issue of hurting anybody. That is not me. But God don't care. You won't look up because you're scared. You know, if you look at the other folk, they're looking directly at us. You guys have long, long sports patterns, and it's time out. It is time out. Last week was last, but you say, "Oh, this what y'all want? This is what y'all want?" When you get the police in here, nobody can stop us. They cannot stop us. It's time out. You guys better wake up, get God, and start praying.
Next speaker is Ms. Secretary. Next speaker is Pastor William C. Harris Jr.
Good afternoon, everybody. Um, tonight I'm speaking as a gentleman of the ethics and accountability board. But I have a genuine reason of why this budget needs to be passed, because my administrative system has informed me that she will be let go as Mrs. Little. Mrs. Little is a hardworking individual. She makes sure that the office runs, she receives complaints, she files those complaints, and she makes sure that people are directed in the right way. If this budget is not passed, they will let her go. And when I mean by letting her go, they will terminate her. Because she is not union, she is an at-will employee. I'm telling you what's going to happen. So I'm standing here to protect the employee that works in the office of the unblused person. I ask you all to do what needs to be done, but think of Mrs. Little, think of the unblused person's office. She's a mother, she's a wife. Her husband is not doing well, and she takes care of him. And her daughter is in college. I need you all to really think about the individuals who work for the citizens of Flint. And Mrs. Little has worked in this office since 2019 on terrorism. She has taken complaints, she has heard complaints. If you don't work for anybody else, I ask that you consider the hardworking people who really are trying to put food on their tables for their families. That's why I'm standing here, because I want to protect Turner, and I want to protect the office. I ask that you all come together for a comprehensive communication. If it doesn't work, it doesn't work. But come together at least and pass the budget that makes sense, because if you know what will happen is that...
Please pass the time.
What's going to happen... What's going to happen is an emergency manager will come in, and they will take over. And it's gonna happen again, and if the budget is not passed in a timely manner, please do what needs to be done to protect the office of the unblused person. That's why I'm standing here.
Thank you. Next one is Speaker Ms. Secretary. Next speaker is Josh Bogus.
You know, you called this last gentleman, the office is unblused. I didn't know we had one of these, but we're... Being here protecting us from... Fire! I see. How many see you two there? You're like... Eighty Sidest Voices? Eighty, sixty, eighty, seven? Voices, are you proud of yourself, Candace? Or are you proud of yourself, Liddell? Because none of these sixty or eighty people are impressed with you, I promise. I'm gonna voice that with the hand up here. I was gonna get it started. I did have some observations, too, to touch on my homeboy here. I was watching, right here. I seen you mysteriously get the homeboy and go back there and talk. And I don't know and I can't prove nothing, but we are pulling some boys, and it's really much awful suspicious, and you jumped his shit and sighted it right in his hall two seconds before the cops got out of their cars and stormed across the thing. That looks really stupid on your partner's previously. Really does. Bullshit.
Please pass the time. Good evening. Twenty-nine point eight, any person that accounts for any may be called to order by the president or any council member for failure to be germane or go unmuted or speaking excessively a lot of times, or any other violation of these orders. Any person who's called to order shall be recorded to the chair to determine whether he is ordered. If a person is determined to get out of order, that person is to be looked at and given any remaining time. So you can choose different language, or you can have a seat.
Okay, I'll say my last piece, and I want to share this to all the city of Flint. My birthday may have been thrown off one to two o'clock P.M. I always have an argument with my property trying to save my business, and your dishonorable judge, Carrie Annable, told me he doesn't have to uphold the Constitution three times in a row under oath. I want all of America to hear that. The judges do not uphold the Constitution under oath. They said it in front of this man, they said it in front of me, he repeated himself three times, he said it in front of my wife, this place is despicable, we need an emergency manager, we need the FBI, and everybody needs fire!
Next speaker is... Yes. Then your point of order. What's your point of order? So we have cameras, not in the camera section. So would you be able to go to the media section?
Where's my room?
I could.
So you are being asked to go to the media section.
It does not have street names, side and street. No, it's a mono pod. It's a mono pod. It doesn't fall under that rule, dude. I don't have any time to have to tell you guys yet. They're incorrect.
Just stand back there.
Yeah, I can start moving, see? I'm moving.
I'm standing with you, man. You're flirting with me, though.
I'm moving.
You keep getting this person's face.
How is I sort of... I'm moving. Oh, dear, you're gonna arrest me? I was slowly moving this way. Really. No, he didn't say under thirty.
Your dad was expensive, you think this is gonna fix your budget? Does lawsuit gonna fix your budget?
Oh, man.
This guy sitting on two police stations, he's got lawyers on standby. Not smart. Salina, take his thing. This is unlawful. This is unlawful arrest and unlawful incarceration. Right here, forty-two, you must see. Enjoy the lawsuit, Candace!
Legit. Yep. This is a hundred percent unlawful. Unlawful arrest and unlawful incarceration. What a shame. They're weaponized, hundred percent weaponized by the police.
Wait on balance your budget.
This is amazing.
Oh, I knew you probably got heat coming from above, resident. But at the same time, I, I am going to do my job safely, and at the end of the day, I'm a fucking person. So you are going to give me the space and respect, and then we can discuss this later. But I'm not gonna have you interfere with my safety, okay? I've been very... I've never interfered with your safety. I've been very...
They get your name and badge number from yesterday. Could you please give me that?
I'm not talking. Okay?
Thanks for doing that, boy.
Correct. Yeah. So you're not gonna interfere with us? At the same time, I've been very cordial with you too. And we have a decent... Yes, we do. And I've been to this point, and as soon as I'm very lucky. But today, honestly, we can change a little bit. And we'll pull up with it.
I see you in the stacks right here.
Why?
Why? So he's getting arrested? So he's being arrested?
So he's being arrested?